Stand to hear the opening remarks from Reverend Davis.
Let us pray. Eternal and all wise God, to give of all good gifts. God, we thank you for this time and moment. God, we ask that you meet us here. Oh, God, give us insight and foresight, oh, God, that we can be what you called us to be. And, God, we thank you for Megan Cook. We thank you for Don Abatella. And, God, we even thank you for me, God, because you've allowed us to be reelected, that we can serve our community. And we praise God for Al Silverstein and Ron Engel, that we can work together for the betterment of the community. God, we ask that you touch the mayor, touch all the employees of the city. And we ask that you just move by your spirit and your might. And, God, I'm shouting on credit, because I know you are God that's able to help us, bless us, and keep us. We ask this, oh, God, in Jesus's name we pray. Amen. Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. We'll start with the approval of minutes from our May 3 meeting.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good evening, Mayor Willie.
We've got a whole list of things going tonight, but I'd like to do some of the easy ones first. Last week, we issued a letter of support to Habitat for the Chop Tank, our project they have going on in Cambridge. And we're asking for our support in her request to get a CDBG grant from the federal government. And we did send that letter off, so if anybody breaks it up, that's what that one was about. We also have from the park board, Mr. William Ryan, president of the board for BAM, who wants to hire a contractor to renovate the soccer field at Moten Park. We feel that's a great idea, and he is under, he has been told that that doesn't give exclusive right to BAM for use of that soccer field. It belongs to the public. But he is okay with that and wants to go ahead with renovating that soccer field for use. So, like, give the council's approval. Do you want to do them all at once, or wanted to not?
I think we can do them all at once.
Okay, the next one is, uh... We want to put a, on the, this is on, to start on the north side of Easton Point Park, off of Glenwood Avenue. And it's a combination brick wall with wrought iron spacing ever so often. And it's to secure that end of the park, because we're always allowed to hold it open so many days a year at this current time. And Mr. Van Enberg has started a drawing and seeking contract terms for putting that wall up. And with the council's approval, we'd like to continue on with that project. So those two items, right now, we need your approval.
Do I even have any questions on the soccer field or the wall for the park?
The soccer field, that'll be subject to our town engineer's approval.
That's up to the Parks and Ed Rec Board right now to make sure that it's done in the right manner and the way we would expect it to be done by town specs. And Mr. Van Enberg is certainly aware of that and working with the park board to see if it's done.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion for approval?
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, the next one is an executive order that rescinds part of the regulations and restrictions that we put in place during the COVID process. Based on the latest CDC guidelines and the ruling from Governor Hogan and also President Biden, we'd like to rescind items one through five on that order and leave open six, seven, and eight. The primary reason for leaving open six, seven, and eight is that they require more guidance from the county at this point. Number seven has to do with sidewalk cafe provisions, and that's where it involves some work for the town, too. And number eight is outdoor dining, and that includes departments and so forth. So six, seven, and eight, we still need work to do, but we'd like to rescind one through five, which includes masks in the town office. They are optional after, hopefully after approval. So that executive order needs to be approved.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Are all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
We also have two requests from the Housing Commission of Tolba County. One of those is support of a CDBG grant for repairs to existing homes under their ostices of about a half a million dollars. I feel like that's something that we should support. So that's item number one. They also wanted to retain any profits from the sale of the Buffalo Soldier House for use by the Housing Commission. That's also money that we had earmarked for the completion of the renovating process on the hills of those six houses. So that one I'm holding, but this one, the one with the CDBG grant, we can, hopefully, the council will approve that and follow this one. I'll bring back to you later.
Motion for approval for the CDBG grant.
It's been moved in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye, we're ready to swear in the newly elected officials.
Who do you like first?
Ladies first.
Ladies first.
Can you state your name? State your name.
Okay. Wrong page. Getting ready to swear, and the wrong person is. Okay, if you'll raise your right hand, and we'll say aye, and then repeat your name, and then repeat after me. Okay, aye?
Aye, Megan Jennifer Mafani Cook.
Do you swear or affirm?
Do you swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland?
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof?
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will do the best of my skill and judgment?
And that I will do the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of council president?
Execute the office of council president.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state?
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
Perfect. If you will sign right on the dotted line? You'll get a payment book in the mail. Okay. Congratulations.
Sure?
Yeah. Now, the next guy, Don Abatella.
I guess that's me.
Did we get a picture of Megan?
Yeah.
Where does it may take?
Right here.
Okay, Don, raise your right hand, repeat after me. Aye?
Aye, Donald Michael Abatella.
Do you swear or affirm?
Do you swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland?
That I will...
Be faithful?
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof?
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will do the best of my skill and judgment?
And I will do the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of Ward Two council member?
Execute the office of Ward Two council member.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state?
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
Gotcha. Okay. That line. Okay, Reverend.
Can we skip all that, and I say, okay?
What was it? I think I was going to take, give you credit for, for your first. I gotta remember that. There you go. It's gotta be good. If you'll repeat after me. Aye?
Aye, Elmer Neil Davis Jr.
Do you swear or affirm?
Do you swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland?
I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof?
And support the Constitution and law thereof.
And that I will do the best of my skill and judgment?
I will do the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of Ward Four council member?
Execute the office of Ward Four council member.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state?
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
Perfect. Yeah, one handed, Ruby?
Sure. Do a three and do a five. I believe the color coordination.
Yeah, did you guys plan on matching?
Me and Megan are in conversation.
Gentlemen, do you guys have any questions for Mayor Willie?
Or board recommendation? Mayor?
We did approve that. We approved the button.
Mr. Richardson?
Good evening, President Cook Council. I have a few items for your consideration this evening. I'll do them individually, just for efficiency, because I think some of them have different criteria. The first is a request from Scotty Oliver from the Tolba County Free Library for a book festival for children. This is scheduled to occur June 12, between 7:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., with about 100 people in attendance promoting the children's literacy. They have requested to close West Street from Federal Street to Dover, so that they can put up a tent, tables, and chairs for that event. There are no associated costs with this particular public assembly event. The police will be able to cover it with armed duty officers. The recommendation is for approval.
Want to take that?
Yes.
And make a motion for approval?
Second.
All right. Move to seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The next is a public assembly event from Marjorie Opalski, I hope I got that right, for Move the Monument Coalition. This is scheduled on June 19, 2021, as requested by the applicant, with a start time of 11:00 in the morning and ending at 2:00 in the afternoon. The attendance is about 1,000 people. The purpose is for the removal of the Confederate monument from public property. There are a number of special requests associated with this permit. Application, closure of streets for a parade route during the march, starting at Marlborough Avenue, leaving the Tred Avon Shopping Center, going to Glebe Road, and Glebe to Washington, and then Washington Street to the courthouse lawn. No parking posted on Washington Street, Federal Street, Dover Street, and surrounding the courthouse three hours prior to the event. That's just so that the police department can clear out all the remaining parked cars in advance of the event. They'll also be closing North Washington Street, Federal Street, Dover Street, surrounding the courthouse during the duration of the rally and one hour afterwards to allow attendees to disperse. There's approximately a little over $14,000 worth of associated costs to the town of Easton for this public assembly event. And the recommendation coming from the Easton Police Department is to allow the march to begin at 11:00, at 11:00 in the morning, to close the streets as requested in the application, and reopen them at 1:30 in the afternoon, or once it's safe to do so after the rally and the event on the courthouse lawn. We've been coordinating very closely with the Tolba County, as they have to issue a separate permit for the courthouse lawns. So these times, although are set in this, they could be adjusted based on the permit approval of Tolba County. I know that we have Officer, First Sergeant Kellner and Chief Spencer here this evening, should you have any questions. And I also believe that the applicants are here.
Gentlemen, are there any questions regarding this public assembly permit?
Yes, I have more than questions. I have a concern. And my concern is, you know, our business districts have been impacted greatly by COVID. And we're now talking about closing our business districts from Marlborough Avenue, Tred Avon, all the way up through the downtown. I don't have a problem with the rally downtown, but I don't think that's the best route. And I would hope we could find a different route that would not include so many different areas where there's retail shopping on a Saturday, where people are out. It's going to impact farmer's market. It's going to impact a lot of different things. And I'm also worried about the public safety side when the fire engines come out, God forbid. So I would hope that we could go back and we could find a different route, maybe through a residential neighborhood or something like that, and allow that to happen, allow the rally to happen, but not have that great an impact.
I'm concerned that we don't have the time periods locked up. I'm somewhat reluctant, because we're taking a pretty significant grab on our police department. There's a lot of man's resources, more so than I'm free to talk about. And we have one time for the parade. We have a much different time for the county. And they haven't come, I think that we, they need to come together, so it's a fluid thing, not something where we... They don't need to be at the courthouse before the parade starts. I'm concerned that we've got a lot of manpower out there we're holding up, because we don't know when this is going to happen. And I think that it can, it can occur. It has not occurred. And I'm a little concerned about that, because the cost to the town is pretty high. $14,000, that's more than we pay for any other kind of event, other than waterfowl or plein air. So I think that the organizers need to get with the county and make sure that they're, we're a little closer together. Because my understanding goes from 9:00 to 10:30 for the county, unless something's changed the past couple hours.
I think the county is waiting for the town to kind of set the time. The application says from 11, excuse me, 11:00 to 2:00. I think 11:00 to 12:00 is probably the march to the courthouse. The event really is probably the 12:00 to 1:30 with a half hour buffer on the end. And I believe the county will probably act accordingly, once we've set our time, excuse me, for their peace on the courthouse. Is that correct?
I mean, certainly, this is something that we've been working closely with Tolba County. And to Mr. Silverstein's point, earlier in the AM hours would certainly be less disruptive to our downtown merchants and our downtown businesses. As indicated on this application and public assembly event, this is as it was requested by the applicant. And they do still need to get the permit through Tolba County. And fortunately, in this case, there is sufficient time before the event that you could, you know, table this and revisit it, once the county has committed to their time allocation. Or we could proceed forward on this as currently structured, with flexibility to modify the start and stop times and/or the route.
Yeah, I was going to ask Chief.
Chief Spencer has earlier, yeah, put it up to the podium, please, has an earlier time slot been proposed?
So First Sergeant Kellner has been dealing with the applicants from the very beginning. And he and I have been in consultation with the sheriff and the county over this. The times have kind of been fluid as we've moved along. In one of the meetings, we did make the request of the applicant to hold it earlier in the morning hours, so not to disrupt the downtown businesses, but they did not agree to that. And in working with the county, they are locked in on 90 minutes. And they have pretty much told us that whatever we decide, they will issue the permit, so it's consistent. So, you know, if the, if the march is going to start at 11:00 o'clock, hour, well more than sufficient time for them to get there. And then from 12:00 to 1:30, and we're not requesting a buffer for them to leave. You know, we want it to be over at 1:30, and that they start dispersing, and then we'll open up the streets when it's safe to do so. But our concern is, if we say, well, you got the permit till 2:00, then those states will do, and take another hour to disperse. So we'd like to, you know, get them out of there as quickly as we can and safely as we, safely as we can, so that the downtown businesses can resume their operations. As far as, you know, moving the march, they picked the location. You know, I suspect that one of the places that is close by, that would have room enough to accommodate them, might be the elementary school on Glenwood Avenue. They could march up that. We have not had that discussion with them, have we, Eric? And I, I don't know how receptive they would be to that. But we could ask. They pretty much set on what they want to do.
Yeah, and I guess that's my thought would be Glenwood Avenue, because you've got the elementary school with all that parking. And, and it would have less impact on the businesses on Marlborough Avenue, the intersections. You know, when you try to get out of Easton, there are only so many intersections to get up to Highway 50. And that's going to hit some of those major intersections.
Well, it would be easier for us to control Glenwood Avenue, come up to, you know, Glenwood, turn on West, and go up to the courthouse. You know, because there's not as much traffic there. You don't have the fire department responding to those things, the shopping centers and all that. So from our standpoint, you know, that would work better for us. Safety-wise, I think it would be better for those that are walking as well, because there's a lot of ins and outs on the route that they have chosen. But again, we didn't pick the route.
I know the applicant's in the gallery. Do you mind, if we ask you a question about that? Is that a possibility of switching the parade route?
I don't think so.
It's not, not a possibility? Okay. Is there a reason why Marlborough Avenue was chosen?
Well, we've been doing this, we put our first application probably four months ago. And we put it in to sort of let you know that we were planning it. And so that would, but because we did it so early, we did have some changes. And there had been talk about starting over, anyways, at Idiwell and walking all that way. And I said, we decided that was too long. That was a long walk. This, this walk is, should take less than maybe 10, 15 minutes. The Easton Police asked us to start the march at 11:25. But we say 11:00, because people will be gathering, and so giving us a little buffer to get started. And, I mean, I, I'm very familiar with the route. I've lived in Tolba County for a long time. It's, it's a short route. There's going to be a lot of people. We estimated 1,000. And so I think that there will be a problem if we are squeezing into different areas and parking. And the school there, there's a lot of parking spaces available. On one side, Peebles is that those two stores are empty, so nobody's parking in the old Peebles. And then on the other side, you have Coles in that area, and there's a large grass field there. So it, we did give it a lot of thought. It wasn't like out of nowhere. And, and so we're moving forward, because it takes a lot of planning, we realize. And even though it's a month away, which isn't really a lot of time when you're planning something this large. And we, we just got our final approval from the Health Department. Even though the masking and stuff is not, we have still committed to do that, to have sanitation things, to have people keeping social distance. So we get volunteers to be carrying, they wanted the signs to wear masks and keep six feet apart. So we have to create the things and do, so it's, it's a lot of just getting little pieces going forward. And anyways, it was not a casual decision. We gave it a lot of thought. The farmer's market is closed to Washington Street, when you're there anyways. The cones, people don't come in and out that way, so it won't disrupt the farmer's market. They're going to be coming in from the other side, which is a big event here on them Saturdays. People really like the farmer's market. And as far as businesses, kind of, I went around the downtown square to let everybody know that we were planning this. And the merchants were very receptive. And I even suggested to them that after this rally, they're going to be people that are hungry. We're bringing in a lot of people. It may, in a weird way, kind of boost their business. So I don't see it as a negative thing. It's, this is an effort to make Tolba County a better place. It's as simple as that.
I have one question. Have you gotten permission from the shopping centers for people to park their vehicles there?
So that was interesting. I looked into that also, because, you know, during Waterfowl Festival, people park all over the place. Fourth of July, people park there for, you know, the fireworks. And they don't give permission. People just park. It's public parking space.
It isn't public parking. I was located in one of those shopping centers for 20 years, and those are private parking areas. And I would assume that you would want to at least contact those individuals, and they would have concerns about liability if, God forbid, somebody got hurt in their parking lot and decided to sue them.
Would that be any different than if they went to Acme and...
Yeah, because they're all, they're all in separate shopping centers, and there are separate ownership of those shopping centers. My, my concern is that you're going to, it's going to take more than 10 minutes. For 20 years, I worked on Marlborough Avenue. You get 1,000 people walking, it's going to take more than 10 minutes. The other thing is Glenwood Avenue is a straight shot-in. There's parking at the school. It's less intrusive for the majority of businesses. It doesn't tie up intersections that are critical intersections for our community. And, you know, it just seems like a logical way of doing things, and I hope you would reconsider.
Yeah, the decision is not, I'm just part of a committee, and I have to be here representing it. The decisions are not, I don't make them on my own. We, we always listen to other ideas, and then try to weigh out, discuss, and vote on what we think is best. But we have spent a lot of time on this.
All right, so tonight, we can approve the application, but keep the discussion for the march open? Is, is that an option?
I mean, you... I would like to make...
First Sergeant Kellner.
Sergeant Kellner has a...
Sorry, I used to be at this forum, so I apologize. So, yes, I've been working with Ms. Opalski for some time. I'm not sure where the, it was always my, to my knowledge, 11:00 to 3:00 o'clock was the request from you as on the permit. Originally, when we discussed the march in its preliminary phases, we, my suggestion to her, because I believe we were talking about using the Coles parking lot to start the march. And I suggested, why don't you move over and try to get permission from the old Peebles to use that lot? That way, we don't have people crossing the street, and they would have sidewalk access all the way up Marlborough and then all the way up to the courthouse without having to utilize the streets. However, the group has been not very receptive to that, because they feel that, because of the nature and the amount of people, that it's going to overflow into the streets. So initially, when we went through this process, that was our recommendation to them, was to keep the marchers on the sidewalks. They would not have to cross the street. They would have sidewalk access all the way to the courthouse. And then we wouldn't have to shut down the streets necessarily, unless there was an issue. So, thank you.
Mrs. Cook? I'd like, I'd like to make a motion that we hold this application, that we have continuing discussions about an alternate route. And we still have enough time at the next council meeting. And we still have enough time at the next council meeting to approve.
I agree with you on that part. I would actually say I think we should approve the rally portion section. Let them go ahead with their planning. If there are a few additional discussions we can have on the parade route, that's one thing. But I think they need some.
So this public assembly permit is strictly for the parade route. The rally part is associated with the courthouse lawns. And they should be coordinating that with Talbot County.
Right.
Just to keep it clear.
Crystal clear.
Yes.
Can I just say something? I guess I can stay here.
Yes.
So it's kind of hard because I've been bouncing between Eastern Police and Talbot County back and forth. Trying to coordinate it. I did respectfully look into the Peebles because that did seem like a good idea to me, just as a gathering space because nobody's there. But you can't have 1,000 people going single file, especially when we're supposed to take six feet apart, right? Because we have COVID then. And it just, it just wouldn't, it didn't make sense logistically. Also, so the streets around the courthouse are part of Eastern Police. And then there's the courthouse lawn, so people are going to spill out into it. So it really is, I feel like, like if we keep bouncing back and forth between the two and we can never get a commitment, it's like one part will say, "Well, we're waiting for thee one." And then the other will say, "Well, we're waiting for this." I did consistently in the beginning say 11:30 to 3:00. And that was because I felt that was like the outer limits of the time. But we have been asked to end it at 2:00 and start the parade at 11:25. And so we accommodated that. That certainly fit into our schedule or planning or whatever you want to call it. So I appreciate people coming into this now thinking, "Well, this is a good idea. Why don't we do it this way?" And, but this is a pretty large group of people. And we have given it a lot of thought. And we wouldn't have put as much energy into this and time if we didn't feel it was a really important event. And, you know, you've been reading about it in the paper for a while. This is not, this is not an overnight, somebody had this idea and thought this would be a good idea. So I would appreciate if we maybe made some decisions tonight so that we could really feel. Like I was very pleased, the Health Department, they said they'd do it 30 days before the event. And I got the certificate today. So that was nice to have because I was concerned to go forward with that. And it's just nice to sort of make, make some steps.
There is the street closure at the time of the Circuit Court rally. So you could approve the closing of the streets during that 12 to 1:30 time period.
Okay. I appreciate everything that the committee's been working on to get this done. I know it's very important. My concern is always, and I agree with Al, and this is safety. And I am, I feel that by going through Glenwood, and I know maybe this hasn't been brought up before, but going through Glenwood would make it a lot safer for the people who are involved in the march. I think the overall goal is to get to the courthouse and to rally at the courthouse and the concern about the statute. So I think that, if that's your overall objective, then I think the route that you take, as long as you get those 1,000 people there safely, I think that's the most important thing. So.
Well, we have an application as written and presented tonight. Is there a motion to accept the public assembly permit as written?
Well, I have a motion on the table. And I'm going to amend my motion.
Okay.
And my motion would be that, subject to using Glenwood Avenue as the vehicle for the march, I would, I would motion to approve the march and closing of the streets in the downtown area.
Second.
Okay, so we have an amended motion that's been moved and seconded to still start at 11 o'clock, still close at 3:00, close all the streets around the courthouse with an addition of Glenwood Avenue rather than Glebe and Marlboro.
I believe the Police Department was recommending going till 1:30, not 3:00.
To 1:00, I see. But the application here says 3:00. I'm just going by what's written on the public assembly.
Yeah, I took notes during the conversation. March start time, although they're going to convene at 11:00. It's going to start at 11:25 to noon. And that could occur on Glenwood Avenue. The rally then would be from noon to 1:30. And then the dispersion of the event would be from 1:30 to 2:00.
Or when EPD deems it safe to open the streets.
Yeah, the reopening of the streets would be once Eastern Police Department deems it safe.
Okay. All right, that's been moved and seconded. We'll do a roll call, I guess.
Mr. Silverstein?
Aye.
Mr. Abatella?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Reverend Davis?
No.
President Cook?
No. All right, I guess.
The next item for your consideration this evening is a drinking fountain for Easton Point Park. As you all know, we've been working very hard with our Public Works crews at Easton Point, converting that former Public Works property over to parkland. Three and a half acres or so have been converted from impervious surface to pervious. And we've planted quite a number of trees out there recently. We did this along with the DNR Community Parks and Playground grant. And part of that grant was the installation of some benches and water fountains. Many of those benches have been installed at this point. One water fountain is ready to be installed. This is a request to add a second water fountain inside that park for use, for those users inside. At a cost of $6,329.88. We request approval of that purchase.
That comes out of the grant?
It'll be funded by grant sources that still remain to date.
Motion for approval.
All right, been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The next item for your consideration this evening is associated with the Eastern Fire Department. They have two capital projects budgeted in the current fiscal year. One is for the installation of a generator. The other is associated, but it's upgrading some electrical and services inside the building that need to be upgraded to code compliant devices. In total, the Building and Facilities Department received a number of bids, but the low bid was C. Albert Matthews Incorporated for a total cost of $74,770. The total budgeted amount for this was $137,000. So there is sufficient funds for the award. And the recommendation from Building and Facilities is to proceed with C. Albert Matthews as the low bidder.
Okay. And any questions related to this bid? Now we'll have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The Town Engineer, I have two additional items to add to your agenda this evening. I apologize in advance. As you all know, Mistletoe Hall Business and Commerce Park is under construction through an EDA grant. And we've received a number of applications from interested businesses to locate that Mistletoe Hall. And as a result, we've discovered that there's a need for smaller parcels than what was created out there. We have gone back to EDA and asked our contact point there if we could use remaining balances in that EDA grant to create a cul-de-sac which services, what is it, six smaller lots ranging from, you know, under two acres to just over three acres. Again, we have business interest in these sized parcels. And EDA has supported the idea of allowing the use of remaining balances in that project to build this cul-de-sac and create the infrastructure utilizing Eastern Utilities and the Town Engineer's Office. To that, we have a proposal from RK&amp;K in the amount of $64,878, which certainly exceeds my signing authority. So I bring it for your consideration this evening.
Anyone have questions on the RK&amp;K proposal?
Motion for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And last, Parks and Rec, this is just a notice to our community. Parks and Rec has two summer camps being organized right now. The application, I believe, is online. It is a baseball summer camp and a soccer summer camp during the month of June. If anyone is interested, I suggest that they go to our Newtown website and look for application. That's plenty for me.
That's a lot. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Richardson?
Mr. Richardson, has there been any movement from the state as far as the light at Route 50 and the bypass? Just out of curiosity.
So the Town Engineer has been in contact with State Highway Administration. And I know that they heard us. And they are moving towards a solution to that. It is going to take some time, but we've had some positive momentum on that.
Good to hear.
Any other questions for Mr. Richardson? Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Van Ember.
I'd like to request a closed session after the meeting pursuant to General Provisions 3305b for business expansion.
Okay. Is that it?
Yep.
Any questions for Ms. Van Ember? All right. Good evening, gentlemen. We have our fire board meeting now.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Richardson, Mr. Ruff, members of the council. Thank you for hearing from us tonight. Can I just give you a quick overview of where we are right now with the Fire Department? With the COVID restrictions being eased up, we are moving forward with our fundraising events. We've had three very successful chicken barbecues. Our last one was Sunday. We sold out on that and made more on that one than we have the two subsequent ones. So we're looking forward to continuing with that. We're going to be reopening our hall for rentals to outsiders as well, which would increase the revenue to the town as well as the Fire Department because we split it on that. We've already had many people call in for wedding receptions, after funeral events and so forth. So that's moving forward. Our golf tournament, for one thing, at this point right now, a September golf tournament, we are two-thirds sold out on that golf tournament at this point, which has been unheard of in years past. So people are ready to get out and start moving. So we're still got the 5K that's in the working. So Mr. Abatella can give you any information on that that you might like to know about. Our stews and brews and our beer fest are all in the workings. We're going back to our picnic for members, just to try to bring some sense of normalcy back into our department. I'd like to thank you all very much for the approval on the generator. They're much needed improvements around that station. Plus, it allows us to open up as a sanctuary. God forbid, if something should happen in town where we need an area like that for a massive number of people. We're moving forward on our equipment repairs and so forth. We have applied to a grant through the Department of Natural Resources, which we normally get every other year. We were denied last year, so we got our fingers crossed that we'll get it this year. It allows us to buy forestry hose, different types of equipment that we need on the engines and so forth. So we're moving on, we're moving forward. As always, we appreciate all your help and support that you give us this time. You know, questions for me, I'm going to turn it over to my chief.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Get your team in early.
Yes.
So in meetings in the past, we've been asked, I believe, with, possibly with the workman's comp issue or something, look into our accountability of our man-hours and stuff. In our main newsletter, we sent out a new check-in for calls where now we can be a little more accountable for who's actually on the truck, who's not on the truck. This will help us with accountability, moving on and hopefully get a more accurate count of our personnel hours and calls and stuff like that. The software that we're using now is going out of date, which we have to go into a new software. So hopefully with the stuff that's in this new software, it's going to help us do a better little bit of accountability and reporting for you if you need any reports from us. Next thing, I guess, Fourth of July festivities are happening this year. I've been asked to meet with the Fire Marshal and fireworks representatives tomorrow at 2:30 to sign off on the fireworks. And last but not least, I think it was an honor that we were asked. I was called this weekend, and I would like to get the mayor and council's permission. On June 6th, we've been asked to take our tower to Annapolis and fly the flag for the fallen firefighters memorial. And we would need to be up there at 11:00. I'm not sure how long, I have to get more details and stuff like that. But being the town ladder truck, I'd just like to get permission to take that out of town for today. If there are any calls that day, we will notify Talbot Center and the next ladder truck will automatically be dispatched to any calls that we have. So we will be covered. And I was just seeing if that was okay to do that?
Do we have a?
I'll make a motion.
I think it's something we've already done. It not only gets the name of Easton out there, but it gives the guys a chance to practice with the tower a little bit. So as long as they have backup coverage for the truck being out of town for that period of time, so be it.
Okay. Well, it's been moved and seconded, so.
I made a second.
All in favor of using the ladder truck on the 6th?
Aye.
That's all I have. Unless anybody has any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
I do have a question. Does Don lead the five mile run? Does he lead runner and all the way through? I just want to know.
He might start out in the lead.
Oh, okay.
I fade pretty quick.
So would.
I catch him pretty quickly.
Oh, yeah. We'll videotape it this year.
You just asked him how his team did last year in the golf tournament.
Don't bring it up.
I'll be calling Carol soon, yes. Thank you. All righty, we have a public hearing to consider the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget. We have four items. I'm just going to read them all off at once so we can link them all together. We have ordinance 761, an ordinance to the town of Easton establishing the town budget for fiscal year 2022. We have ordinance 762, an ordinance to provide for the raising by taxation the amount necessary to pay the ordinary expenses of the town of Easton and to provide for the payment of interest on the various bonds, issues and reductions of certain bonds and notes for the period of 12 months and setting the interest and penalty for delinquent bills commencing on July 1, 2021 and ending June 30, 2022. We also have ordinance 763, an ordinance to the town of Easton to carry forward certain capital fund expenditures into fiscal year 2022. And Resolution 6134, a resolution of the town of Easton revising the town's license, application, permits, inspection, certificate and other fees. There we go. Mr. Mayor.
Good evening again. In accordance with the requirements of Article 6, Section 5 of the Town Charter of the Town of Easton, I have under separate cover presented to you with the proposed budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021. The budget I propose totals $24,855,543 for the general fund. It's an increase of $1,479,382 from the current fiscal year budget. The budget includes all necessary safety and training for continued development of the staff. Expenditure appropriation levels are generally very close to those of the current fiscal year for the operating departments. This proposed budget maintains our conservative approach, given the resources available to the town. I am proposing maintaining a tax rate of 52 cents per $100 of assessed valuation, which complies with the tax limitations imposed by the Town Charter. I am proposing to maintain the discounts allowed for prompt paid tax payments of 2% if paid by July 31st and 1% if paid by August 31st. We have included myriad increases for the current staffing levels. This proposed budget reflects input from the departments. As it stands, the budget is balanced. Any additions will require a funding source. And I think that's important to. funding source, and I think that's important to remember as we move forward. This budget is a result of many hours worked and I believe represents the best allocation of resources, which are clearly limited. I am still working on certain issues and may modify the proposed budget as the situation warrants. In addition, I am including this write-up of several impending issues that will have to be addressed sooner rather than later. You will hear from them over and over again between now and the final budget approval vote in June. Public safety will require special attention as we continue to fund a highly-trained volunteer fire department. Safety of schoolchildren will require an additional traffic signal at Route 322 and Glenwood Avenue. The police department will require new equipment in the communications and surveillance areas, which will cost exceeding $1,100,000 over the next year. In addition, to combat the growing number of vacancies in the department, the following steps have been taken. Recruitment of certified officers will receive credit for up to three years of service time. New recruits will be offered immediate employment instead of waiting to finish the state training courses. Only those recruits who show exceptional ability will be offered this opportunity. Parks and recreation improvements require entrance to the RTC property, a traffic signal at the Route 50 entrance, extending Calvert Street, as well as playground equipment rebuilds, all totaling approximately $1.5 million. Approval has been given to hiring employees trained in turf management, which is necessary to assist with the excessive use our fields undergo. Our number-one infrastructure problem to be considered is stormwater drainage. We have several watershed improvements on the books from design and construction to major storm drain replacement on Harrison Street, and it's imperative and storm drain upgrades in the east-central area of Easton. Costs are not all in, but total dollars needed to staff to start will be in the $3 to $5 million range. We now employ the most talented workforce group of employees. Training will be ongoing. Basically, we are three separate groups. We have the town employees, we have the police department, and we have Easton Utilities, each with specific needs to be addressed. And that includes pension, OPEV work rules, and et cetera. Current plans are to hire a consultant to study our operation and offer solutions. Cost here will be significant, keeping benefits competitive, hiring a consultant, and implementing change. We have just touched the surface in a few areas. We will need to expand more effort for available grants and funding. Currently, expenditures are rising faster than revenues. Just one area that needs a serious look in the future is the availability of park fees, which is long overdue. Economic development will require more attention and include the entire business community, including business recruitment itself. As we receive COVID funding, which will replace revenue losses during the pandemic, a serious look at how money is spent is necessary. As you read through the budget, especially the capital, you will notice costs are less than required. The budget item indicates a placeholder for necessary attention, which will require added dollars to complete. The IT department requires an additional employee and a replacement of outdated equipment. The finance department is being tasked with upgrades to the current software. Highlights of 2020 and where we expect to see positive gains for 2021 and beyond. Issuance of general obligation bonds in the amount of $7.5 million at 1.54% interest rate, combining our economic development efforts in locating and renovating offices, construction of Mistletoe Hall Farm Business Park with several contract offers for property already, and you heard the town manager talk about subdividing some of the existing lots to allow for more room and growth there. Establishing a training facility for our Easton Volunteer Fire Department, adding strength to the public safety efforts. Continuing to develop the Eastern Point Park area and rails to trails upgrades. Moving the renovation of six homes in the Hill neighborhoods to completion, with three nearing completion now and three on the books. Expanding the grant program, which helps lower-income families with needed home repairs. And this has been a particularly successful program that is handled under our Affordable Housing Project, with, I think, up pretty close to 15 grants so far that have been issued to help with home repairs. To locate a large amount of street furniture in the business community, providing places to eat lunch and meet business associates and friends. Placing all building maintenance under one department, and a new and more user-friendly town webpage is now online. Our property tax rate, as said, is of 52 cents per $100 of assessed evaluation, and it remains in place and is still among the lowest in the state. I'm also asking that we continue the current rate despite a constant yield rate of 51.1% - 1 cent. We want to stay at 52. Moody's and Fitch have both given Easton an extremely high rating for towns our size, which is exceptional. So, even with all of the lifestyle changes this past year, the disappointments and the setbacks, we continue to move forward. We've added some new employees, changed some work procedures, reorganized some areas, and above all, continue to monitor our financial position. Without exception, from public works to the police departments, to all the volunteers, to the administrative staff, to Easton Utilities, we continue to pay, say, our workforce is the best in the area and possibly, probably in the country. So, we're not being modest. We're just telling you the facts. We do have a very talented workforce. And got a couple of items here that we'd like to show. Please notice that this year, we have exceptional graphics, many hours of tedious work on the part of the town manager, but the general fund revenue has steadily gone up. As you'll see on the next slide, the expenditures have steadily gone up, so we tend to pretty well expend what we take in with a few exceptions. General fund expenditures for this year compared to the last few years have been pretty much in line, and this is for the capital equipment. Constant yield tax rate, as I said, we want to keep at 52 cents. The same figure, if we were to go with a constant yield tax rate, would have been 51 cents, and that would have been a decrease of about $210,000 if we accepted that rate. So, we'd like to keep it the same. This is kind of a short history of our bond ratings, and we're now at AA+ with a stable outlook for fiscal year 2021, '22. Municipal tax rates, you can see we compare favorably over the years with the surrounding area, and especially, we compare favorably when you consider the police force that we employ and the other benefits that the town does offer. Even up this close, that's small print, but the pension fund, as far as the town employees is concerned, is funded at 87-plus percent, which is pretty high. And the OPEV benefits are a little over 51%. So, financially, we're in pretty good shape, and as I said a couple weeks ago, we sent a memo out. We're due to receive part of the American Rescue Fund proceeds within the next month or two, and at that point, like to have a work session with the council to kind of put in order of what we want to use that money for. The guidelines for using the money are coming in almost daily, and we'll be able to come up with a plan for how we're going to use it. So, that's pretty much it.
Any questions for Mayor Willie?
Yeah, I've got one. You caught me off-guard with your letter here. What is this 1.1 million for the police department communication? That's the first I've heard of that.
For the what?
1.1 million for communications and surveillance in the police department. It's on your first page.
There's a list in the... Notice I'm going to the budget with the small print that I won't be able to see.
Okay.
But it's a... Do you have the page number?
For the police department capital? Page numbers 59 to 61. 61's probably your first page.
I think I've got to working the operating fund here.
It's 61 should be the capital for police department.
This is it? There's a list of them here.
The mayor album.
I'll look. You give me the thing. I'll look at it. We've got a lot of meetings going on.
All of our departments create a 10-year capital plan, and in that capital plan, there are expenses that we anticipate over the coming years. And we are making some improvements in the items identified by the mayor, but there's still a long ways to go. I believe that that's what's being represented here.
I'll have to get it. I've got the page. We'll talk about it later.
Any other questions for Mayor Willie?
Well, I just want to say that, you know, having gone through the work session with my fellow council members and the department heads, we appreciate the time and the effort that's been put in to coming up with a balanced budget. It's a challenge. There are some things that I think each of us have some questions on. When that rescue money comes in, we're going to want to, as you said, sit down and talk about it and see where we can make some transfers and do some things that we think are going to be most beneficial to the citizens. But I do compliment the mayor and Don and the full staff for everything that's been done to bring the budget in front of us and have it balanced.
You've heard the basic budget. You should have a copy of the printout, and we have the vote on the budget in two weeks. So, if there's any questions that come up, we'll get you the list of the capital items that you're looking for. But when I combine them together, I don't visualize them at this point.
Will this budget presentation, which looks really nice, as you said, will that be available on our new website so that residents can see where money's going, where it's coming from, their tax rate, things of that nature?
We should be able to do that without a problem. Don't want to put this on there because we'll eat up the website.
I think, Mayor, my only comment is still the tipping, I'll call it the tipping fee, that maybe we might need some additional discussions on. I still feel it's quite significant, and maybe there's a way we can ease that into citizens and the businesses.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. If anyone has any comments on any of the three ordinances in the resolution, you're welcome to come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll keep the record open through the following meeting in June. Is there anyone that wants to bring anything to the attention of the council tonight?
I don't know if this... You're expecting this, but I'm Gary Thompson, and I'm the president of the Board of Directors of the Waylands Association, and we've been talking to Mr. Abitello, and we've sent several emails about the unit that was breached in a police activity several years ago, and I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Abitello, and whoever else was involved in getting the windows re-boarded this week, because it looks much better. The question I have, though, is now that the squirrels are trapped inside the unit, what can be done?
So, the squirrels vacated the premises before we applied to the windows.
Oh, they did?
They did.
Along with about two dozen bats.
Okay. Are you sure that the squirrels are gone?
So, we don't have the authority to enter the properties, but no, we're not able to confirm that all residents have been in.
The concern we have, and Lori and Brian Blaisjacker are also on the Board of Directors, the concern we have is from the units adjacent to the 703. Squirrels can be pretty aggressive in digging through thrywall. And if the neighbors report any activity, I'll be back with you.
Thank you.
Well, in the town, the inspector was out there. There was very little damage from the squirrels that he could find.
Looking at the outside.
Well, okay. And we couldn't do a whole lot with the inside of the house right now because of legal limitations.
The... I don't know if you saw it, but I did forward a video showing squirrels coming and going through the one window, and there was an additional video, which I did not forward because it was poor quality, showing a squirrel party on the inside of that unit. So, they were actively coming to the inside of the window, looking out and inviting their friends in. So, if I get more reports from the adjacent units about noise on the inside, I'll report it back to you. If that's the case, what's the plan?
What's the legal step next?
We could certainly contact Animal Control, Talbot County Health Department, Animal Control. That would be one resource. But in order for us to enter that property to evade any type of situation, we need to go before the court system to get an abatement order. We are in that process for, obviously, the other concerns that are related to this property, but that process will take us some time, especially with the backlog in the court system.
Yeah, I can appreciate that. Of course, the neighbors, 39 owners of the properties, have been very anxious about the situation for the last almost three years now. So, what was done is really appreciated. I want you to know that. But if there is additional activity reported, something else is going to have to happen with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there anyone else? Seeing none, items from council.
As I drive around the community and also see the police accident reports, I'd like to encourage people to use the turn signal on their cars so they let their neighbors know what their intention is, if they're turning or stopping or going into a parking space. It's very obvious some people don't realize what that unit is on the side of their steering column. column, and hopefully they will start to use that. You know, kids are going to be out there, we've got bicycles out there, we've got lots of people moving around. It's a serious issue, and we ask people to just be safe. Thank you.
Mr. Abatello?
Just asking folks in the community to be patient at different stores, because obviously with this change proposed by the CDC and from Governor Hogan, there are going to be some stores where masks are no longer needed. There's going to be some stores where the business owner prefers that masks still be worn, and just be patient with the employees of those stores. And if it's something that you don't agree with, remember you have the right not to shop there. So, you know, just be patient with everyone.
Mr. Engel?
I had the opportunity to come downtown on Saturday for the Community Day, ran into several of my colleagues, one of them was following me around. But I thought they were very good. I think it's a good start. There weren't quite the people I would hope to have been there, but I think it's a good start, and I'm hoping that the event they have on the Rails to Trails is done again. I understand it'll be done the 26th, I believe it is. Really good event, and I think, and I thank Reverend Davis for getting some food there. I think food is going to be the big thing to attract people. They find out there's food there, there's going to be more people there. But certainly all through town is enjoyable. It was nice walking through town, hearing music. So our EDC and all those people that helped make this thing go, I give them my appreciation.
Reverend Davis?
I want to thank my colleague for... I should show you the video of him doing the hucklebuck or shuffle. I don't know what it was called. But we want to thank everyone for the Community Day. It was a real good time, a good outing, just to get out in the community and interact. Met some very interesting people and even a council person who seemingly was following me around. But it was a real good day, and I'm just grateful that, you know, the diversity in the city came out, and it's a good start of something real good. And I think it's important to be in a community where you can live and work and still have such activities that are representative of all the people who work diligently behind the scene. And I want to give kudos to Josapha, who did a real good job, did some excellent work, and I was very proud to be a part of the Community Day, so.
I'll second what Reverend Davis and Mr. Engel said. I thought Saturday was great. I had a chance to walk around with one of my kids, and Culture Crossing was wonderful. There was a good crowd, beautiful art that was put out, and I know there's a lot of time and energy and volunteer hours put into planning the whole day. It was very good. So hats off to the community and all the volunteers for making it a success. I also wanted to let everyone know there will be a public hearing with the Park Board on May 26 at 5:15 for the renaming of RTC Park in honor of Mr. Ford. All right.
Well, I forgot one thing.
Oh, sure.
There will be music downtown for the rest of the summer for people that... I think it was really good walking around town and hearing live music. So that's one of the things we're looking to make the experience downtown better and attract more people.
Yeah, every Saturday. Can I have a motion to move into closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Rowe?
Mr. Silverstein?
Hi.
Mr. Abatello?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Reverend Davis?
Yes.
Yes.